Are we ready to go? Am I watching the screen?
The last planning board meeting was live streamed.
There we go.
Watch it, don't mind.
Good evening, welcome to the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for Monday, July 16, 2018, and our first order of business is always is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is a review and approval of minutes, let's take April 23, 2018.
I didn't bring a note today, but I had read them all at home.
Okay, are we ready to act on them?
That was the short one, right?
I think so. Are you ready to act on them tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, and excuse me, by the way, we don't have Bob here, so both Steve and Rich are going to be appointed to sit on tonight's activities. Do you guys both each attend the meetings on the 23rd and 30th? I don't remember, Steve, if you were here on both of them.
I've been on, I was on one meetings.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 23 minutes. Thank you, James, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, and the minutes of April 30, 2018, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, James.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Any comments for the discussion of the minutes of April 30? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. First item on our regular business agenda for the evening is application and a public hearing for Phil Trial, public hearing for an application for variances from section 32-50B and the table of permitted uses of the New Market zoning ordinance to permit placing a single-family residence, a double-wide manufactured home on the lot. The lot is located at Sleepy Hollow Cooperative, tax map U3, Lot 117A, in the B2 zone, a zone where a single-family residential, including manufactured housing, is not a permitted use. And we have the application papers here, and Mr. Trial sent in a slight amendment to criterion four, I think he sent that out shortly after, like the same day as the packet itself. I just want to note that that's part of the record, everyone's had a chance to read everything. So what I'd like to do is have Mr. Trial, our representative, come forward and just tell us, we've read everything, but this is your opportunity to tell us why you should get the variance, and any information you think we should consider, and there may be questions from some members of the board, so we appreciate that.
Why I should get the variance is because if I don't get the variance, then there's absolutely nothing I can do with that land. It's landlocked, it's grandfathered.
I think they're speaking to my grandfather. They're live streaming this movie.
Speak into the mic, Mr. Trial.
Yep.
I think they're live streaming it for...
No, I understand.
It's land that's been in the family ever since we've been here. It was part of the, I mean, it was a separate lot from the trailer park that my grandparents used to own. People that bought the trailer park from my grandparents decided not to buy the land, so the land has come through the family to me. And there's always been a deeded right-of-way from New Road to get in and out of there. There is no frontage on New Road, so really, what B2 allows down there, it never could happen without the frontage on a main street, so.
Right.
Had no idea, it got changed to a B2, I guess, back in 98. I've got the tax card, still says R2 on it, which is here and there, I understand that. So that's why I'm here, asking for a variance to put a single-family home up there for myself, and leave the rest of it woods.
So the right-of-way runs over Lot 108, or where does that, I wasn't clear?
The right-of-way is off New Road through the trailer park.
Oh, I see.
To the backside.
Okay. I see, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Trial?
I would think that he's got to go down through his variances.
Yeah.
For the record.
I mean, we have...
I think you have your five criterias, I think, for the record, because we're not even on TV now, and I know that live stream is.
Variance criteria is what you...
There's five of them.
Okay.
You had them all listed.
Did you want him to, you want him to read it?
Well, what do you think?
I don't think he needs to read it, I mean, we've read everything.
Yeah. I've read everything, but I didn't know if he has to read it for the public. I don't know. What do you think, Diane?
Would you like me to read it? I'd be happy to.
Well, if you...
I mean, you could ask him the questions, but I'll read it.
Sure.
Is that, and that way we can make sure it gets on the record.
I think that's right, because then we'll have a record of it.
The property, okay, the first criteria, granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The property in question has been in my family for nearly three generations. My grandparents bought the property in, what year was that, Mr. Trial?
1963.
Okay.
And owned...
They owned and operated the mobile home park until 1989. My immediate family moved into the mobile home park for a brief period, and later moved to an adjacent house on New Road, which is a budding tax map U3, Lot 117A. I'm very familiar with the 13-acre tract, having roamed the trails there and played there in my youth. My present interest is to build on the house, a house site on the land, either a single-family home or a double-wide manufactured home for my personal use. I'm not interested in developing the land for commercial or business purposes, which is allowed under the current zoning, just to make this my permanent residence in my retirement. I wish to live there quietly, in a low-impact and compatible way. I know and appreciate the land and want to preserve its aesthetic values and protect the natural and cultural resources that are there. So granting a variance will allow me to have a residence, which would not be contrary to the public interest. Criteria two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. If the zoning board grants this variance, then the spirit and intent of the ordinance would be observed. Specifically, the proposal is consistent with the character of the neighborhood being adjacent to the existing mobile home park cooperative, and would preserve and enhance natural and aesthetic qualities of the land, and would create a desirable place to live without overcrowding, which is among those stated in the zoning ordinance. Granting of the variance would do substantial justice. Criteria three, granting the variance would provide me an affordable place to live. I will comply with all the town's requirements with respect to water and sewer systems, which serve to protect the public health and safety. The benefit to me as the property owner would not be outweighed by any harm to the general public or the neighborhood. The addition of another dwelling unit in this vicinity would not be detrimental or affect property values adversely, and is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Criteria four, if the variance were granted, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. The proposed single-family home will not diminish the value of surrounding property due to the size of the lot upon which the home will be placed or built. The woodland buffer will be maintained, and there'll be no diminution of value. Also, the home will be similar in character and value to other homes in the Sleepy Hollow Housing Cooperative, which will fit into the existing character and fabric of the neighborhood. The remaining acreage will remain in current use, which preserves natural qualities of the land, so local property values will not be deflated. Criteria five, unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from others, as indicated above, the property has been in my family for many years. The zoning was changed unbeknownst to me and my family, allowing, not allowing residential uses, but only allowing commercial uses. Although the zoning changed in 1998, my family wasn't aware that it was changed. As a matter of fact, it wasn't until I came to the planning office that I learned that the property was in the R2 zone, was not in an R2 zone, but in a business zone, forgive me, which precludes single-family homes, including manufactured housing. This information came as a surprise, as the information on the town's assessment records show that the property is in an R2 zone, was not, and that was an error. I also learned from the town that this was a legal, grandfathered, non-conforming lot, although it is not landlocked, because the owner has rights of access to it, and it, but it does not have frontage and approved street. Town road, which limits our ability to subdivide the land or develop it in a way that's permitted under the current zoning. The property, due to its irregular shape and lack of frontage, is burdened by the town's regulations, unlike other properties in the area. The application of the town's regulations unduly restricts the property and does not serve in a fair and substantial way. Literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship to me as the property owner, due to the special and unique physical characteristics of the land, which are different from others in the neighborhood. It should be noted that the town changed the zoning from R2 to B2, and there has been virtually little or no development interest in this area, due to the poor access off of New Road, constraints caused by wetlands, steep topography, the proximity and potential pollution from nitrogen loading into Great Bay, the lack of suitable railroad access off of Route 108, and there not being direct access to a major highway. And of course, the structural condition of New Road over the railroad is another constraint, which keeps it from using, being used in a business fashion. The appropriateness of the zoning has been discussed by the town fathers and the Economic Development Committee in recent years with an eye to changing it back to its former R2 classification. The last hardship test related to physical hardship is that the applicant believes the proposed single-family residential use of the property is a reasonable one, but due to the regulations, it cannot be used reasonably. We feel that given the limited access and configuration of lots, there are no other reasonable uses that could be made of this land. Therefore, it should be allowed to be used for at least one single-family home, because of the hardship that's been imposed. Did you want to add anything else?
No, that was beautiful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trial. What I'm going to do is open up for a public comment, if there is any.
Yep.
And then, depending on what the comment may or may not be, then we might ask you to come up and answer some questions, or we might not.
Okay.
So we appreciate that.
Stay up here, or...
You can grab a seat.
Okay.
Grabbing the front row, because you may have to jump right up again.
Yeah.
At this point, I'm going to open up the application for a public comment at this time, if anyone wants to say anything about it one way or the other. This is your opportunity, we're happy to hear you. Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and at this point, open up to the board for discussion.
I have no questions for the applicant, but I'll make a motion when we're ready.
That's very different.
Usually he does.
Well, that's just cut and dry, as far as I can see.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it either, I know, it's a, just let him make his motion, I think.
Addressing the five criteria of the New Market zoning ordinance, the applicant has shown that the property is restrictive from developing a business, as there is no access from the land to the east and south. Railroad tracks to the west and unlimited use to the existing roadway of the existing mobile home park. Although the purpose of the B2 district under section 32-50 shall exclude residential uses in the table of permitted use, that we grant the variance from section 32-50B and table of permitted uses on this 13-acre parcel for a single-family residential, including manufactured housing, with the remaining 11 acres remaining in current use. I move that we grant the variance, and that the variance criteria as submitted by the applicant be included in our decision.
I second it.
The only thing I would suggest is, I think the applicant put in something saying the remaining acreage, rather than 11 acres in current use, and I think we just...
It said 11 acres, unless he changed it.
He did change it, he put in an amendment to the application.
I didn't notice that.
It wasn't...
I have it, I have it right here, Rich.
Oh, you do have it.
But I...
The idea is that whatever the minimum requirement for a single-family home is...
I thought the remaining was changed to 11.
No, it's the other way around.
Okay.
It's the other way around.
Are you sure?
Yes. You changed it from 11 to remaining, is that correct?
Or was it the other way around?
It's a 13-acre lot.
Right.
One acre of it is already out of current use.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to build something.
I just want to make sure that we don't tie your hands unnecessarily by putting 11 acres being in current use.
It's got to be a minimum of 10, anyway.
So, you see what I'm, you understand what I'm saying? I'm trying to help you, by not, by not trying to tie you down to a number.
But I didn't, I didn't see this change, I thought the remaining was changed to 11.
I think it was the other way around.
Are you sure?
We didn't know what the minimum requirement was through the assessment records, that's a different department, so it was my understanding, whatever the minimum is that he has to keep for the home.
We may put in that no less than 10 acres will be in current use.
Right, and I think that's more correct.
No less than 10 acres in current use, I think that's better for you, because that's...
Exactly, you can't have in current use if you don't have 10 to begin with.
Right, no less than 10 acres will be in current use.
Which is confusing as to what the requirement was.
Right, so I don't want to tie the applicant's hands unnecessarily. I think this is a classic case where variance is called for, because there's no use that can be made of this property, it's landlocked, there's no frontage, and I don't know why it was included in the commercial zone, but it was, and there it is.
I'll accept the amendment.
Okay.
Big mystery.
Is there anything else we need to do with this application?
Just reword Richard's for including me.
So the record should reflect that, rather than 11 acres, it will be, the motion will read, at least 10 acres will remain in current use.
Yeah.
Or no less than 10 acres will remain in current use.
Yeah.
And that's how it should be, should be phrased.
Because if less than 10 acres, you're losing all, you're losing all the current use.
Right, you can't.
The only other thing I would suggest is that we just adopt the presentation presented by the applicant, which is pretty thorough.
Yeah.
I have to say, as our findings, as the basis of our decision.
Yep.
And I see consensus on that, so having that, having those items in mind, all those in favor of approving the application, subject to Rich's motion would be, as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Guys have it? Thank you, Mr. Trial.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks very much.
Next item is the application of Leo Manso Jr., public hearing for an application for variances from section 32-89 and 32-51B of the New Market zoning ordinance to permit construction of a residential structure/use in the B3 zone, where a single-family is not permitted, and to allow a side setback of 30 feet, where 50 feet is required. The lot is located at Ash Swamp Road, tax map R6, Lot 4-2, in the B3 zone. Mr. Manso, good evening.
Good evening. Leo Manso, I'm the owner of this Lot 4-2 on Ash Swamp Road, it's a five-acre lot, it's in the B3 zone, I have a map of it here. It'll be a little small for me, this is probably a little bit...
We've got copies, but that's helpful.
The lot is outlined in the highlighted, in yellow highlight, a five-acre lot, the frontage is here on Ash Swamp Road. There's also, I only, 30-foot deeded right-of-way across the property, located here, and this is Wolf and Hamel's home here on Ash Swamp Road. This is, you might have seen the gravel here to the rear. This is a 5.068 acres, acre lot, and in purple or red, whatever color you want to call this, an outline, and a structure that's to scale to this plan, and this plan, this plan is one inch goes 20 feet, so I've detailed a residence here with a outside deck to the rear of it, and it's shown along this lot line with the Hamel property. The, this map does outline using the GOTS, the setbacks for the B3 zone, and this setback along the Hamels property, there's a 50-foot setback in the B3 zone, and it's also shown here along George's property. The, in the B3 zone, the, when there was a residential use, as in the butter, the, that sideline setback is reported as 50 feet, that's a B3 commercial use to a residential use. If this was B3 to B3, as you can see, it's a lot smaller setback. So since we have a residential structure here, it's a 50-foot setback, and the same thing along here. So, we're proposing to access a residential home to be built in this location, over this 30-foot deeded right-of-way, that also would serve as the, that right-of-way serves as a six-foot wide walking right-of-way, can't hear me? Okay. I'll take it out of here. That, is it on?
As far as we know.
Says it's on. So that 30-foot right-of-way serves as a six-foot wide walking right-of-way to go to the cemetery, which encompasses my property on, in two spots, and New Market Sand and Gravels property as shown right here. So it's about, half the cemetery's on my land, and half the cemetery is on New Market Sand and Gravels land. And there is a state ordinance of a 25-foot setback for any cemetery property, you can't encroach within 25 feet of that, and that's what's shown on this plan, right here. So, the proposal is to build a residence on this property, since it's, used to be residential zone, and in early 2000, I'm not sure if, I think it's 2000, 2001...
2003.
2003, the, this, this area in New Market was re-sown to the B3 zone, which is a, basically a commercial zone. I've, I've owned this property since 1993, and, matter of fact, made a rather good-sized proposal for a site plan, and had it approved in this zone, but was unable to market anything in that zone. The, what we were told back when the town was proposing to change this zone to the B3, was that services would be brought there, like water and sewer, from the community. Never happened. This is 2018, it's not happened yet. I don't see it coming very soon. I've been to planning board meetings where they talk about revisiting the zone, but I don't see any activity. I'm getting old, so I'm here. And I'm also here with my daughter, Michelle Whitcomb, who's, would be interested in building a home here, should this come to pass. So I've, I've offered the answers to the criteria, and I'm happy to read them, if that's okay.
Sure. Please.
Criteria number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I've said the public would have to be adversely affected for the public to have any interest. Allowing a residential use would enhance the tax base, and a residential home would be built and taxed, thus increasing the available tax revenue to the town. So I look upon that as a positive thing for the town, since I'm a taxpayer here also. And if we can gain some more taxes, instead of having property sit idle, even though it is being taxed at twice what the residential tax was, the day after this property was brought into the B3 zone, my taxes were doubled. They've been doubled ever since, no activity. Handsome here again. So criteria number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because, the ordinance was written to promote commercial business development in what is known as the New Market Plans area of town, and along Route 152. Route 152 is a state highway, and allows all types of truck use. All available vacant land in the zone has a frontage connection to Route 152, except Lot 4.2. Its primary entrance is onto Ash Swamp Road, which the town of New Market has posted its use as no-through trucking. Number three, granted, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, the town has limited the truck use of Ash Swamp Road, which restricts the use for Lot 4-2 in the B3 zone. In my multi-year effort to sell this lot as a commercial property, I've only found three potential buyers. They were, they were only interested because the listed price for sale was only a fraction of the tax card value. Once they learned of the truck traffic restriction on Ash Swamp Road, they were no longer interested. Number four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding property would not be diminished. Lot 4-2 literally surrounds its two closest neighbors. The neighbors about us are both pre-existing, non-conforming residential uses in the B3 Granting of a variance to allow a residential use would only enhance the current value of these properties, since the residential use would be consistent with the use of the properties on each side of it. And again, those properties are the Hamel property and George Davenport's property, right here. Their home is here, and here. My lot goes all the way around, including the right-of-way, totally goes around the Hamel property, and I have the deeded right-of-way across George's property, and then my property goes all the way across the rear. There's just one, one side I don't encumber, and that's New Market Sand and Gravels.
It's one of the most unusually shaped lots I've ever seen. It's shaped kind of like a sickle.
It is, it is unique.
It's an omen.
Anyway, sorry.
It's okay. Criteria five, A-1, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision, and the specific application of that provision to the property because, the general public purpose of the ordinance is to provide... the property because, the general public purpose of the ordinance is to provide land where commercial enterprise will be able to exist and thrive. Since the town has limited the use of truck traffic on Ash Swamp Road, the ability of a business to take hold and thrive is questionable, to say the least. The cross easements required as a condition of the subdivision approval to create lot four dash two should have been considered when the town restricted the use of Ash Swamp Road, which, which has eight properties within the B three zone. This is just another contributing factor to the failure of the B three zone. Criteria five A dash two, the proposed use is a reasonable one because, the proposed residential use is reasonable because this lot surrounds the adjacent lots, which are both pre-existing residential uses. Five B, I guess it is, explain how if the criteria in subparagraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship would be deemed to exist if only, and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. And a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it. So number one, the shape of the lot. It is unique shape. The fact that it surrounds two homes, the lot frontage is in a wetland, and the town has posted Ash Swamp Road for no through trucking. A residential use is a reasonable use for this unique lot. This lot also has a cemetery on two portions of the lot. That concludes what I had to say of answering the criteria.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open up the application for a public comment. Anyone who wants to comment on the application, feel free to step forward. Yes, sir?
George Davenport.
If you can come over to the microphone so everyone at home can hear you. Put the microphone up. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
George Davenport, owner of lot ten, speaking for myself and my wife Angela Wydenbener, who resides with me there. Just a couple of comments for the board. In regard to the proposed plan here, I do want to make it clear where the property boundaries are distinguished on that site plan. Currently, the yellow highlighted lines, I believe, are intended to note property lines. The driveway that is noted on here is actually on my property. There is, and I am very aware of, a deeded right of way from nineteen sixty-four that is on our lot. However, that thirty foot by one hundred and twenty-five foot parcel of land that encompasses is my property. I own that via deed, and I would like that clear on the plans. I would request that. Second, I do emphasize with Mr. Manzo's position regarding the factors contributing to his perspective on the success of the B three zone, as well as the current tax burden that he says it creates. I also acknowledge his desire to build residence on that lot. I do understand his position regarding the variance on the setback. However, the prescribed fifty foot setback better supports a desire to preserve aesthetics to all of the surrounding properties, both myself and Mr. Hamels. And I believe that there is sufficient land there to support that and still accommodate his request to build. As a third point, as owners of the property for which the right of way traverses, if Mr. Manzo's requested variances are approved, I would respectfully request that my wife and I be consulted in regard to any improvements or modifications to the said right of way. And that would include paving, removal of any trees, or consideration of expanding the use of the right of way to include utilities. And then as a final point for the board, the scope of reliance on said right of way provided by my wife and my property is questionable due to the fact that lot four tech two has additional frontage on the northern, northern end of the lot, as well as the fact that Mr. Manzo owns the abutting property that could provide access and utilities. I bring this up because of, in my perception, some form of overreliance on my property for convenience. Those were my points.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you coming in. Anyone else with public comment on the application?
My name's Mike Hamel. I'm not going to add anything to what he said. He had it right there. So I stand by him.
Okay.
With all that authority, he should be able to move his house a little bit.
Any further public comment at this time? Seen them, we're going to close.
I would like to ask the applicant a question.
We will, let me just close the public hearing, and then we can, the board can comment and ask questions. So we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing at this time, and the board can discuss the matter now and ask questions as you think is appropriate.
I have a question for the applicant. You want the setback from fifty to thirty, is that to better locate a house on the lot?
It is. And also to provide ability to get around the house on the right-hand side. We're restricted by this cemetery.
Cemetery? Yeah, that's what I thought when I was looking at the plans.
And, and the cemetery, the grade of the cemetery is considerably higher than the rest of the land in the area. So you have to keep the twenty-five foot setback, but you almost double the setback because of the grade involved. And in order to get, an area for a well would be located with a proper well radius to keep it on the property would be located in this area, right here on the property. So if you, if you had to service that well, you, you need room to get by the property on this side. The, and the, and the idea on, on this home is to create a walkout on this side of the building and to let some daylight into the basement area of, of the, of the proposed structure. And since this is the southwestern side, that's, that's a good side to be looking to get some daylight into that basement. So knowing the grade in this area, keeping it thirty feet off that lot line would allow that to happen. Now, in a strict residential use, the sideline setback is only twenty-five feet. So I didn't ask for the, for the full residential setback twenty-five foot, because I felt that this home would be able to be developed in that location using, using thirty feet. I wasn't looking for the full twenty-five feet. So I'd be able to get by on this side, which would be the driveway side of the building, and still be able to accomplish that goal. Also, we're incumbent by this six foot walking right of way for the, for the cemetery property. I came before the planning board a couple of times over the years, and certainly back in two thousand and four, and said, not only myself, but myself in conjunction with New Market Sand and Gravel, made a proposal to the town to move that cemetery to the Riverside Cemetery, where people could get at that property and, and be able to visit the grave sites of their family members. A lot easier than trudging up to the top of this mountain and, I shouldn't say mountain, this hill, and where the wind is doing its job and taking its tolls on all these grave stones and all the grave sites. There's some huge trees up there that have been toppled by the wind, and, and they're breaking the grave stones up. So I made that proposal years ago, and they didn't think it was a fitting thing, so that was okay. But here we are today, and we're still dealing with that. So, and that's okay. But the, trying to, trying to get to that, trying to let the public get to that is, is difficult. So that's the purpose for the house here. The, there were two test pits done to the rear of the home in this area, and that would be the area for the leach field, along, along, parallel to that property line. So trying to keep the proper setback on the house to those, to the septic location is also the purpose for why the house is in this location. So we've tried to think this thing through and not just try to plunk up a rectangle on a, upon a plan. So that's, that's the reasons why it's there, and that's the reason why I didn't ask for the full residential setback of twenty-five feet, which would be in keeping with a residential use.
Now, on the deeded right of way, the applicant, the abutter said that he didn't want to lose his land where the right of way is. You're not taking the land from him, you're just using it according to your deed.
That's correct.
So you're not taking his land. Yeah, right.
Over that property, I, I met with Mr. Davenport and Angela. I spent an hour and, hour and a quarter with them there last week, and we talked about this. And I told them exactly what the intention would be. The intention would be to develop a driveway over that right of way and bring the electricity up that driveway, maybe underground, maybe overhead. We're dealing with two different electric companies. One ends right here, the last pole is right here. And the other one is across from the Hamel home, right about here. And there's nothing in between. And I told Mr. Davenport that it was our hope, although we hadn't met with him yet, it was our hope to bring the, bring a pole from here to the corner of the right of way, and then go up the right of way to another pole overhead, and then go underground to the house. And he was relieved at that because he told me that what they didn't want was a pole and wires running across the front of their property.
Which you couldn't do.
That's, you, you can, he can either verify that or not, but that was the conversation. So, and I said, I had given that some thought. This pole is across the street from the Hamel property. It's not, not right on their property on, on the front line, it's across the way. It angles from this pole down here across. So the same thing would happen. It would come from across the street, over to the right of way. And can't tell you yet what would work best, underground or overhead, but we're entitled to do either. We haven't deeded right of way. There is, there is probably three trees that would have to be cut within that thirty foot right of way to be able to properly pave and drain a, and develop a driveway. There's a huge pine tree which has probably a forty inch butt on it, which is dead as a doornail. It's probably fifty feet tall, and, and it's, it's a menace. That tree has, has to come down, and it is pretty much along one sideline of the right of way. And that would be on the Davenport, closest to the Davenport's house as opposed to, to the Hamel home. So there are some trees that have to be cut there that the right of way is, is staked and pinned with existing pins and some pins that we, we paid to have DuSett add back in two thousand and four. So the public works has said that they would issue a driveway permit there. That was done quite some time ago. They had no problem with that. Even though when they repaved the roadway, they didn't put pavement in there. And we've been using that since I've owned the property since nineteen ninety-three. It was used before that by Mr. Philian, who owned the property beforehand. So, you know, the comment was made about coming in some other way. Well, we're talking about a B three property. You start crossing a B three property with a residential property, and you got trouble. It's as simple as that. At least in my experience, you got trouble. It's an awful long way, is out to Route one fifty-two to get there.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate Mr. Davenport's. A lot of what we're hearing, it, it would actually come on the planning board at, at some point if it's approved, and, and I can't see why it isn't. The property that, I've been a resident in this town all my life. The person who bought the property was with one of my best friends. I know the land well. I've been there many, many times over the years, and, and I see what you're asking.
Great.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure this wouldn't go to the planning board, at least it's being whispered in my ear.
Right.
Building committee application, I wouldn't imagine.
He needs the, he needs to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. I know you can't hear enough here, but it's gonna...
I can't hear anything anyway. We have two hearing aids, so. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Rich, was there anything else?
No, I, I've, I've heard all I want to hear, here, rather.
Mr. Davenport?
George, is that you over there?
Let's do this. Let us finish asking questions, because more things may come up that you want to address, rather than do it piecemeal. But I'll give you another chance to speak. Mr. Manzo, you mentioned, and I know it's the case because I've ridden and walked and occasionally jogged and ridden bikes past, that the, the north side of this property is very much impinged by wetlands. It's reflected on there, but it, I think we're all pretty familiar that that's, doesn't seem like access will be practical from the north, from the other side of the Hamel property to where you are. And I just want to make sure the record reflects that, right where you have your finger.
There, there is about, I don't know, maybe ten feet right there.
Yeah.
Along there, you, you can see the wetland drawing marks.
Yeah.
Right here. There's, there's a little bump here, but there's a little bit on the corner, but this is probably ten feet wide here. And then it disappears right here.
Yeah.
You'd have to come around the corner to get over here. This, this mark right here is, is the edge of wetlands.
Yeah.
That dash line right there.
Yep. And I just, I, I know you know this, Mr. Manzo, but for Mr. Davenport's benefit, your deeds, your respective deeds say what they say. There's nothing we can do to alter what your deeds say. That's just outside of our jurisdiction. So you own what you own, and you own what you own.
Right.
And that's just, so we're not going to, we can't change anything in terms of what each of you own, and you guys have to work that out between you. Just so, just so you're clear. In terms of what the right of way is or isn't, that's outside of our, outside of ZBA's purview. I, I'm not familiar enough with the precise location where you have the house. What is your elevation above the Hamel property? And what is your view over the Hamel house from where you, where you propose to put this house?
Well, this is the Hamel house right here.
Yeah.
So there is no view over it.
Okay.
This is a lawn area, and this is a whole hedgerow of burning bushes, probably ten feet tall.
Okay.
Sorry. I know better, too. So, again, we have no view over the Hamel house. Hamel house is here.
Okay.
The, the, the front porch, there would be a front porch on this home, right on this corner.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So the, the view, if anything, is, is, is just, here's the right of way, it's parallel to the right of way. This is, this is woods right here on the Hamel property. And this is lawn area. I call it lawn area, it's mowed and, and, and well-kept and maintained.
Yeah.
And there's a rather large hedgerow, hedgerow along the road of burning bushes, probably ten feet tall. So the view is at the backside of the burning bushes and, and through these, this bit of woodland right here.
Okay.
That, that goes along this whole edge. The, the septic system for this lot would end up back in this area, so it would be behind the present Hamel property, if you would. That's a pretty good distance there. And this is, again, this is, there's a wooded buffer here along that. So we're kind of in the middle of the Hamel house and Davenport house.
Okay.
But quite a distance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, certainly from George and Angela's place, there's, there's, there's quite a bit there. This time of the year, it might be hard to see that from here, but...
Certainly wouldn't be from, from, from the Hamel property, but, um, we, you know, we, um... Tried to do the least amount of development we could to the lot and, and create a home and a, and a driveway and, um, and kinda stay out of everybody's way. That's the purpose, that's the purpose of that site.
Okay. Any further questions? Discussion for the applicant, Wayne?
I have more comment than-
Can you belly up to your microphone?
I have a comment versus a, uh, question. This whole area up here has been regulated with a B-three zone, which is virtually useless as far, and, and you alluded to it. We have, the services are not available. It's overtaxed. This is, uh, as a result, Skip's trying to do something because he has a right to do something with his land. I think he's, I think he's entitled to this. I think something has to be done on the planning board part to redo this, um, to make it more feasible for... If, if that's what the town wants, is B-three, then something has to be done. Like I said, this is more comments than, um, but I, I certainly sympathize with you in trying to make something useful of your property and use your property. And I think he has a perfect right to use his property. And I think those rights are being taken away little by little. That's it.
Thank you. Any further comment? Questions for the applicant? Mr. Davenport, you wanted to speak again?
Yes.
Sure. And Mr. Hamel, you feel free as well if you, if you would like to, you don't have to, you may.
Um, I, I did just wanna acknowledge, I did meet with-
Mr. Manso, I appreciated his, uh, time and, uh, the opportunity to understand his plan. So, just to do, acknowledge to that, uh, also, uh, agree with your assessment that, uh, the, the board here can't work through any deed issues. That will have to be resolved between us. I, I do believe that, uh, Mr. Manso and I can and will have to separately work through, uh, utilities discussion and we, we will, uh, work on that matter separately. That was my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anything further based on Mr. Davenport's comments or anything else anyone has thought of they'd like to address? I'm guessing you've got a motion in there.
If we're ready for motions, I'll, uh, go through them. They're kind of extensive.
That would be unusual for you, Rich. Happy to hear it.
Don't you back them on.
We gotta let him write it. Thank you, Rich.
Through them, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. In the case of Garrett Gray versus Seidel, one forty-three, New Hampshire, three twenty-seven, the New Hampshire Supreme Court clarified that RSA six seventy-four colon thirty-three one B should not be read to simply imply an applicant must meet any burden higher than required by statute, but merely show, must show that there will be no harm, i.e., will not be contrary to the general public interest if granted. As this lot, fronting Ash Swamp Road amongst residential homes, will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. The master plan supports thoughtful development that preserves our natural resources and enhances the aesthetics of Newmarket while creating a long-term tax base. By granting the variance, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood nor threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. I'm gonna skip three because approving three, we have to, must meet the other, the other. So, I'll go to four. If the variance were granted, the value of the surrounding property will not be diminished. The applicant has said it best, the neighbors' abudders are both pre, pre-existing unconforming residential uses in a B-three zone. By granting the variance to allow a residential use would be consistent with abutting properties on Ash Swamp Road and it is more likely than not that the resident use overriding a business use will not decrease values, but rather enhance their values. Criteria four has been granted. Unnecessary hardship. Only to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the prime ordinance provisions and the specific application and provisions of the property. Because the purpose of this property in the B-three zone over many years, having not its intended and permitted uses in the area, as well as abutting properties in the B-three zone, the applicant's property of five-plus acres with an access from Ash Swamp Road has lost a reasonable use from uses allowed in the B-three zone by posting no through trucking, thus creating a hardship to the applicant to develop, as was proposed through zoning change. This leaves no other than to allow a residential use which is consistent to the abutting properties on the Ash Swamp Road, as was intended when the, when in the R-zone. The proposed use is a reasonable one because though the zoning was changed in the area from the R-zone to the B-three zone in the year around two thousand and throughout these many years, no substantial development has occurred in this created B-three zone. To be more correct, no development has occurred as was intended by the zone change. The proposal used as requested by the applicant is a reasonable one. Under B, explain how if the criteria and subgraph, paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owning the special conditions of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it. The applicant's property located at three seventy-six Ash Swamp Road in distinguishing it from other properties in the area has road frontage of a hundred seventy-five feet, primarily wet, wetlands to the west of three seventy Ash Swamp Road that includes a residential, uh, residential house. To the east area is bounded by another residential home at three sixty Ash Swamp Road. The special conditions on this property, as an early burial ground on the property, has noted in Dusset survey map of one twenty-three oh four, see note eleven. No construction or excavating shall occur within twenty-five feet of the boundaries of cemeteries. To further unnecessary hardship, I refer to the Board of Adjustment of New Hampshire, page D-eight, Susander versus the Town of Bonstead, one thirty-nine, New Hampshire, four seventy-six, six six oh A, three D, four forty-seven of nineteen ninety-five. In determining whether a hardship exists sufficient to prevent the owner from making any reasonable use of the land, the operative use is reasonable. A word that has been central to the development of common law. Law in this case had strange configuration due to shoreline and the only reasonable use of the property was for a single-family home. The plaintiff appealed the decision of the Superior Court of holding the defendant's grant of the variance to the intervenor to construct a single-family home on Roa Sun Cook Lake. After reviewing evidence and taking a view, the trial court found that granting the variance was the only reasonable action that could have been taken under the circumstances. Because of setbacks, the building envelope on the lot was an elongated, somewhat curved, roughly seventy feet long. The slope of the lot, abundance of ledge, and remote location prevented other uses permitted under the ordinance, the Supreme Court affirmed unnecessary hardship had been met. It going back to three now. Like, if we grant, uh, we can't grant three unless we meet all the other four. Granted the variance would do substantial justice because any loss to the individual which is now outweighed by gain to the general public is an injustice and the proposed residential use ID consistent with the areas present by using, by present use. By granting this and the other four variances, substantial justice is done. And I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Rich, you have written here-
With, with questions.
Go ahead. That's what I was just gonna say, go ahead.
I, Richard Shelton, make a motion to approve the applicant's request for variance from section thirty-two dash eighty-nine and thirty-two dash fifty-one B of the Newmarket zoning ordinance to prevent construction of a residential, residential structure used in the B-three zone where single-family is not permitted, uh, permitted use and allow a side setback of thirty feet with fifty feet is required. The lot is located at three seventy Ash Swamp Road, tax map I six, lot four dash two, and a B-three zone with the conditions. The applicant has the use of the old gravel way as shown on Dusset survey map of one twenty-three oh four, see note four, number four. As noted prior relating to cemeteries, that no construction occur within twenty feet of boundaries of cemeteries as six-foot-wide pedestrian access easement in favor of Newmarket Historical Society Society to the cemetery shall be provided across the subject panel, par, parcel. A proposed location for said access is shown herein, as shown on Dusset survey map of one twenty-three, two thousand four, notes number six and eleven.
Just to clarify, you meant twenty-five feet, right, not twenty feet?
Twenty-five feet.
I said twenty-five feet, didn't I? Or did I say twenty?
I thought I heard him say twenty, but-
I'm getting old, you know?
It should be clear that it's twenty-five.
That's just, it's twenty-five, it's twenty-five right here.
And then you said, you said note four, I think you meant note eight?
Notes, number six and eight, and eleven.
Eight, six, and eleven, I think you said four. So, it should be eight, six, eight, and eleven.
The only thing that I question is, would it, would the jurisdiction be Newmarket Historical Society, is that-
It's on the map.
Oh, okay.
It's on Dusset's map.
It's reflected on Dusset's.
Oh, alright, okay, okay.
It's in, it's in the map.
I didn't know what you're-
It doesn't say to the general public, it says to the Newmarket Historical Society for, for their use, but I, I bet they should maintain it, but I don't know if they are or not. I doubt it.
My guess would be not.
Alright, second.
Further comment, discussion? Thank you, Rich, very much for doing all that work. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Rich, it's a tremendous piece of work. Any new or old business to come before the board at this time?
Yeah, you gotta find some replacements here.
Why?
Yeah, why? There's some work, I got really too many projects going, I'm working full steam ahead on that dedication for the John Meyer Park. That's coming up.
Well, uh, we are more than happy to have people join us at any time. So, we encourage people who wanna get involved in the town to come join the ZBA. We don't meet too, too often, four or five times a year maybe. And we get our business done and we have a lot of fun and we learn a lot. Any other new or old business, new or old business to come before the board at this time? Seen none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose?